Good evening and welcome to the August 19th regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting. At this point, if you'd take time to turn off your cellphones and then stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business, Mr. McFarland, would you take attendance?
I sure can. President Singer.
Here.
Secretary Baker.
Treasurer Friedel.
Here.
Member Blasey.
Here.
Member Lotterbach.
Here.
Member Roche.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Very good, thank you. At this time, we'll move into the consent agenda. We've got item 2.1, which is approval of the meeting minutes. We have persons recommended for employment, staff members that have announced their resignation, and open book project resources for the 3rd and 4th grade social studies programs. And that is it. Are there any items that you wish to remove from the consent agenda and discuss individually? Seeing none, at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that the consent agenda be approved.
Second?
Moved by Lotterbach, seconded by Roche. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? And the consent agenda passes unanimously. You know what? I didn't say out loud, item 2.5, which is approval of the payment in the school system bills, and 2.6, approval of the authorized legal payments. Do I need to re-vote for that, or... All right.
They said the whole consent agenda, so...
Yeah, they're not... We should be good. All right, moving into item 3. Mr. Shero, do we have any presentation to the board?
Nope, we do not.
All right, then we'll move into item 3.1, which is for action. We have student reinstatement hearing recommendations. Mr. Jaster?
Thank you. I have four tonight. A board subcommittee met on July 24th, 2019, in regard to student A who applied for reinstatement. Restorative practices and the seven factors required for consideration were used to determine the recommendation. This time, it's the recommendation of the board subcommittee that student A be unconditionally reinstated, and a copy of the full resolution is attached to your board agenda.
Do we need a separate vote on each one, or are we gonna...
We can take them as a whole, as they're written there.
Okay, continue.
Yep.
Student B, a board subcommittee met on July 24th, 2019, in regard to student B who applied for reinstatement. Again, restorative practice and the seven factors were considered when determining the recommendation. This time, it's the recommendation of the board subcommittee that student B not be reinstated. The subcommittee recommends continuation of offsite counseling and academic service for the 2019-20 school year. Again, the copy of the resolution is attached to your board agenda. For student C, a board subcommittee met on July 24th, 2019, in regard to student C also applying for reinstatement. Restorative practices and the seven factors were considered and used for determination of this recommendation. The board currently recommends student C not be reinstated at this time. Subcommittee recommends continuation of offsite counseling and academic service for the 2019-20 school year. And again, a copy of the full resolution is attached to your board agenda. Lastly, student D, a board subcommittee met on July 24th, 2019, in regard to student D who applied for reinstatement. Restorative practice and the seven factors required for consideration were used to determine this recommendation. It is currently the recommendation of the board subcommittee that student D be unconditionally reinstated. And again, a full copy of the resolution is attached to your board agenda.
Okay, very good. Thanks, Jeff. At this time, I'll entertain a motion. When you say the motion, make sure you are specific with student A, B, C, and D.
I move that the recommendation be adopted with respect to student A, that student A be unconditionally reinstated, that student B be... that reinstatement be denied at this time, with respect to student C, that reinstatement be denied at this time, and with respect to student D, that unconditional reinstatement be approved at this time.
Support. Okay, motion by Lotterbach, support by Friedel. And is there any discussion?
Jeff, could you state how many people were actually on that board? It wasn't just school board, a portion of the school board.
Of course.
Just for clarification.
Correct. Yep. There were three board members, two administrators, Superintendent Shero and myself. We had teacher representatives, district administrator, and a parent rep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good question. All right, if there's no other comments, or...
I had one other question. Is that set for the year? Is there... Does anybody ever... They have it available to them at semester as well, if...
Yeah, they technically could reapply almost at any time after... So the one is a set period of time, and from now, they could reapply at any time.
Okay.
And so... But with good counseling and talk, we've talked about the next time, they probably will be ready. I believe both these students are presently being serviced through the JCC, so we'll probably continue to work with them when they're ready.
B and C, you mean?
Hmm.
Yeah, the two denied one.
Yes.
I assume maybe that was your question.
Yes.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions? Seeing no more at this time, we'll move into a vote. All in favor of approving...
Roll call.
A roll call vote. Well, Scott, could you do the roll call vote?
Okay. President Singer.
This is roll call vote to approve what John had...
So a yes is two.
Each individual student A as unconditional...
Item 3.1, you can just say item 3.1. Yes.
All right. To approve item 3.1.
Roll call vote to approve item 3.1.
All right. Yes.
Secretary Baker is absent. Treasurer Friedel.
Yes.
Member Blasey.
Yes.
Member Lotterbach.
Yes.
Member Roche.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Okay, and it's unanimous. Thank you. All right, we will move into item 4, which is request to address the board. I believe we have a few people who have signed up to speak to the board tonight. Do we have a specific order?
One who let us know ahead of time, and then I believe there's someone else who's...
So you have the one on your agenda, Pam, if you want to call him first and then open it up.
Okay, we have a representative from Great Lakes Bay Invitational to address the board regarding a check for Midland Public Schools and appreciation of student volunteers who worked during this year's LPGA event. When you come up, if you could state your name and what you're representing.
Of course, of course. Can you guys hear me all right?
Sure.
Yes.
My name is Bradford Jones. I am the volunteer coordinator for the Dow Grand Bay Invitational. I am here to let you guys know, on the behalf of the Dow Grand Bay Invitational, that both Midland Public High Schools secured the top funding for the volunteer program that we had for this inaugural LPGA event. So that is HH Dow and Midland Public High Schools. They help us fill 200-plus spots for our volunteering youth caddy programs, where they were able to help with pros, amateurs, executives, and really learn more about the game of golf, and also how to just talk and network outside of school environments and such. They've also helped with our standard bear program, where they had the opportunity to follow players, caddies, and others inside the ropes for the first event, and really get to see how they get to play and help everyone else around. So those two, both of those, were able to raise, on each side, $2,500 on each side. And they are also able to select the area where they will want their donation to go to. So we had kids from the BAM program, kids from the robotic program, tennis and other sports, and even other activities, and they were able to contribute for their work, what they did and volunteered, directly to those programs. So we just want to say thank you for helping us reach that goal, and we look forward to working with Midland Public Schools in the near future for volunteer opportunities and more.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
It's pretty great to have that event in Midland, and I know we'll have it four more years, and it's wonderful to have our students involved as well. And I'm sure they appreciated the opportunity to be able to get funding for their special events that they're involved in and support their school in that way, too. So thanks for your work. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the board tonight? Come on out, state your name.
I've got my notes here. I'm Jennifer Ringold. I'm an MPS parent, and I'm here to speak with the board and administration this evening in regards to Chromebook policy changes and the new insurance policy. So since first hearing about the new policies for Chromebooks this summer, I've been having conversations with MPS families and administration, trying to clarify expectations and understand what changes will actually be implemented this school year. As of lengthy emails back and forth just today, and a brand-new link on the MPS website that just went live, I finally have a clear understanding of what the optional insurance policy entails. I appreciate that Mr. DeSick and Mr. Bruton and Mr. Sharo were receptive to my questions and concerns, and have worked to provide more accessible information to clear up many of the misconceptions and miscommunications that I've been encountering so far this summer. I also sympathize with the board and this administration with the worry about funding for the 2019-2020 school year and the increased cost of maintaining one-to-one devices, some of which are now approaching four years old, and have lived through much more than four years of wear and tear with continual opening and closing at middle school and high school every day, all day. That being said, I ask that the board exercise extreme caution with regards to this new policy. Communication regarding costs that the districts have covered to date but will now be passing on to families has been unclear and presented solely through the marketing of this new optional policy to cover the changes. I believe that the changes in what's expected financially of our MPS families should be more clearly communicated. It's very worrisome to me that MPS is creating a new set of financial obligations related to a piece of equipment that is required for academic success and testing. I've stood here before to call attention to socioeconomic segregation in this district, and I urge this board and administration to please continually be more aware of the systemic issues and impact that policies like this can potentially cause. I've spoken up about device policies that could segregate or discriminate based on the ability to afford costs associated with a device or technology access already at parent information committee meetings, district school improvement committee meetings. I've expressed my concerns to Mr. Sharo and Mr. Bruton, and now I'm bringing these concerns to you as a board. To date, none of my three children have had any noticeable damage to the devices that they've used since 2014. I don't anticipate there being a change in how they treat their devices, but I can't wrap them in bubble wrap, and I can't prevent them from accidents either. So many families in our district, way more than the 30% who qualify for free and reduced lunches, are a replacement cost of a device, or a $50 deductible payment, or a $25 insurance premium payment away from a financial crisis. It worries me that even though folks don't necessarily need this policy because their students haven't had an issue before, they will pay for it anyway, even if they can't afford it, because now they are worried that they won't... What will happen if they don't have it? Sadly, looking at the cost for parts and labor, barring a massive accident to a Chromebook, this insurance policy isn't really that good of a deal. The majority of repairs are less than the $50 that the premium and first deductible would cover, and it is also extremely inexpensive to get a scheduled rider on a personal insurance policy. $6 for the entire year will cover all three of my family's personal devices for full replacement cost. That's a huge difference from the $75 that MPS is offering to me as premium for three devices. I would like this board to actively consider the financial burden, even if it's labeled as optional, that this policy puts on families. I would like this board to critically think about the fact that this burden is in regards to a piece of equipment that is required for academic success, especially in the secondary levels. This equipment is also tied directly to district funding and success with regards to test scores. The district needs these devices for testing. To be willing to put a socioeconomic worry or burden on MPS families to meet that need for the district, to me, calls into question who truly benefits from this insurance policy. I see this new policy as a lose-lose for families. I really want this administration and board to do better. Technology, in my opinion, should be a win-win and an equal playing field for MPS students. I would challenge this board and administration to come up with better solutions. Thank you.
I appreciate you coming forward and sharing your thoughts, and we'll take them into consideration. Is there anyone else who would like to come speak with the board? Okay, seeing none at this time, we will move into item 5, 5.1, which is for information. It's gifts. Mr. Bruton?
Yep, these are for information only tonight, both items 5.1 and 5.2. 5.1, gifts totaling $5,100 tonight, $100 for food service scholarships, $3,000 for classroom magazines from the Chestnut Hill PTO, and $2,000 for recycling and composting supplies for the Jefferson Middle School Green Club from the Wee Charity. And at the end of the broadcast, we'll make sure that we put personal thank yous on that publication. And also, item 5.2 is the gift of an upright piano from Mr. Mitch Dobbs, which we are extremely grateful for.
Great, thanks, Brian. All right, moving into 6.1 in memorandum.
I have one thing for finance facilities and operations. It's been quite a while since we've had a board packet update of the Barton Mallow executive summary, and then the detailed summary of Series 1 and Series 2, so I'd like to request that for next month.
Sure.
You were scheduled to have it this month, and you had one in the spring, but when we received it last week, it was not accurate, and so we have sent it back asking for an accurate up-to-date one. They've once again had a change in their financial manager account.
Yep, it's been further complicated by the spending down of Series 1 and the beginning of spending of Series 2. And so, as Mr. Shero said, we wanted to ensure accuracy, as one is closing, one is opening, and we are meeting next week to make sure it's accurate, and then we'll get that out to you as soon as it's ready for you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, moving into item 6.1. Mr. Bruton?
Yep. First, we have sympathies to express to the families of Ms. Sharon Wood, who passed away on August 7th. And Ms. Wood was a supervising secretary at Dow High for 19 years, retiring in 1996, so our condolences to the family. And then, item 6.2 is a retirement. Ms. Tamara San Miguel, teacher over at Seber, will be retiring as of September 30th of this year.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Item 7 is correspondence to and from the Board of Education. 7.1 is for information. It talks about letters from the Board of Education, one to Jen Daniel Fox and one to Jacob Sinclair. Item 7.2 is for information, letters to the Board of Education, and that was from Midland Daily News requesting information regarding employee investigation. Item 8 is scheduled activities for information. All meetings, regular and special, for the Board of Education are listed there. And then, item 9 is our study discussion session. And at this time, I'll open it up to our board, and I'll start down here with John. Nothing? Okay. Brad?
I would just say, welcome back. I drove by the stadium on my way here. Soccer game going on, football games are soon to follow, along with band, Palm, cheer, the whole... The whole group. So school is starting very, very soon, I know, but the activities have already begun.
Very good. Scott?
Nothing tonight.
Mary?
Nothing.
It's quiet.
Nothing.
All right, very good. I guess all I would add is, welcome back to the students who are already, like you said, in their activities, and hope summer was safe and rejuvenating, and I look forward to having the halls filled with students again. Mr. Shero?
A little bit about our safety protocols. What we've been working on, I shared some documents from Mr. Jaster about our Alice training that we did last year and our implementation plan for this school year, and we hope to run a Alice simulation in the spring and then be able to go say that we are now in Alice district. So we're not there yet. I also wrote to you a little bit about a device called HALO, and so one of the biggest leading health epidemics for students today is vaping, and we have a very difficult time determining when that's occurring. If you've seen some of those devices, and we know it occurs right in our buildings without us being able to do that as a protocol, so this device would detect that, send an alert to a building principal who can then intervene at that point. So we're going to pilot a few of those devices at Midland High this year, see how it goes before we go too full-blown into that. But it has a lot of promise, eventually could detect things, such things as gunpowder as well and other items. So it's a pretty interesting device, but we're going to go slow, make sure we do it right. Wrote to you a little bit about MTSS. We like our acronyms, and so multi-tiered system of support, something we've been working on for a while and would like to take to a new level. Michigan Department of Ed last year had something in the budget called 31N money that flowed from the ISDs, and we've chosen to take our proportion of that and potentially hire an MTSS coordinator. Penny's working on that. We'll see how that goes. We have somebody in mind, but we're needing some... Go ahead if you'd like.
I was just going to add a correction. 31N is the mental health grant.
Sorry, yeah.
It's 31A.
And then, we're also been partnering with Del Chemical on I&amp;E Coordinator, so our discussions are ongoing at this point in time. But in further advance that, if we had someone who could spend more time and lead that charge versus the many, many hats that Penny wears in the district, we potentially could move a little quicker and do some more going forward there. But there has been a lot of action around that as well, and I kept you kind of aware of the plans and steps that we're taking and the trainings that we've gone through, as well as last week, we had... Penny had 20 teachers and administrators, or our core team of I&amp;E, being trained last week by Dr. Jolly from SVSU. So a lot of things happening going on in there, including we now have our selected advisory council who act as advisory to that core group of 20 as well. Enrollment, you know, we're all enrollment-driven. We want to serve our students. Our finances certainly depend on that as well. And as I shared with you before, as someone who was raised in a family business, I want every customer I can get, and so the more we can serve our students and all the students we can, and that seems to be working out very well for us, because right now, I would give you a pretty smiley-faced report on enrollment, but it's way too early to give you official numbers on that. But all inclinations would be that we're going to be in really good shape with our enrollment come this fall. State budget, latest news is today, an extension budget for October. At best, a budget adopted November 1, which would mean flat funding, so we'll get the same funding that we occurred last year, which shouldn't be too much of a problem for us, as we hope we'll settle a budget that does have increases in it. So it would just be a matter of floating that cash flow, which right now, we're in perfect financial shape to do that, so that shouldn't be a problem. So we'll see where that goes, but the latest out of Lansing today is an extension budget for one month as they solve their situation there. If you've been around the district, you've seen that construction is in full force. Brad mentioned the stadium, and we kind of got that somewhat together. Brad was involved a little bit, pulling some wire, some difficult wire, I understand, huh? In the stadium, but press box looks pretty good, pretty much completed at this point in time. They'll swap out some windows that came in the wrong color, but everything else is good, and we're waiting for signs on those stanchions next to the press box as well. So that is a very nice facility going forward, parking lots and science labs and locker rooms, and a lot of stuff going on in the buildings. Adams under full reconstruction. It looks much better than it did a week ago, so we're feeling much better about that. I think if we had one problem area that we'd be a little concerned with is the HVAC at Dow. We knew going in that was a big project all summer long. We'll have it all running. Does it cool it, you know, exactly the way we want it on the first day? And every classroom will be the unknown at this point in time. So you're running, I can't remember, 15 old units with 15 new units in that loop, and so that's been a pretty interesting process as we go. I remember we do the other 15 next year as we go forward, so... That's all I have. Construction's been going pretty well. I think we'll be fine for opening day going forward. Budget-wise, you know, hasn't changed at all. We'll still be where we were. It's getting the accurate official accounting, so when Brian looked at it last week, we just decided not to bring that forward with an inaccurate report. We couldn't get it right from them going forward. Off of Mr. Ringold's comments, there's one thing I need to say, that there's always been fines in place, so that is not new, and that was one of the reasons this committee went to work. If we have fines on devices, just like we treat them as textbooks, they're no different than textbooks. And so if we had a damaged textbook, you had a fine. If you had a complete destruction of a textbook, they paid for the full cost of that. It's a price... About a price of a textbook. And so what we found was inconsistency in how to apply those fines. And so we've tightened that up, created better policies to do so. While doing so, many districts do offer insurance. They use either an insurance company or they self-insure. We've chosen to try a self-insure policy, and so those funds will be collected, go into a pool. At the end of the year, we'll see how well the pool did. If you know how pools work, sometimes they work very well. You know, sometimes you get a rebate back on a pool, or you lower the cost the next year. I'm not sure, looking at the damage that we had the previous year, that will be lowering the cost, but it was an option for parents that we thought could be out there. And I would agree. I probably would not purchase the policy, it's just the way who I am. I have... I don't buy collision on my old car, and I would... You'd be able to cover that car if it was destroyed, and so it's each individual decision, but we thought while you're doing it, it was another option out there for them, so... But the fine structure for damage has always been there. We just haven't always had consistency. Doing the process, moving forward, we're tightening things up to be able to go forward from there. That's it.
You mentioned the science stanchions. What are they going to say?
Help me, Brian, you ran on a little bit. So one is going to say Dow High, one is going to say Midland High, and one says Midland Community Stadium.
Correct. Yes, sir. With colors associated to them.
With colors. We'll have one of each.
Right.
Aren't there four of them?
Correct.
Correct.
Two Midland Community Stadiums, one Midland High, one Dow High.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So the two center ones are the Community Stadium, the two outside are the two schools. Then they have the ability to hang things there, too, as well. Schools seem excited about that piece of it. It's always been very generic in that stadium, and they were looking to be able to add some to it.
So when did we approve that?
You approved the stanchions.
Yeah.
You approved there'd be some letters, but from there, that was our doing.
Okay.
Okay.
Because I thought that was an alternate, and I don't remember... Maybe I wasn't here, but...
No, no, that wasn't alternate. It was part of the stanchion, right? We just later had to choose what we were putting there.
Kind of goes with design, right?
Yeah, there was no... It was... There was no charge to that or anything. So back and forth, me architect what was needed to be said in there, and so... And we went back and forth many times on different options in there.
Okay, I'm confused, because I thought that was an alternate.
The stanchions were.
The side columns were.
Right. Yes, and you did approve that.
But now the words on top.
Right. And you did approve that.
Those were determined later.
The question you're asking, you did approve... The stanchions were an alternate, and you did approve that.
Right, we added that on.
Okay.
That approved price covered all of it.
Okay. But we did approve that?
Yeah. What wasn't approved was the extra...
Platforms.
Platforms.
Do you remember that discussion? I think you and John were kind of in favor, if I remember right, and we took a vote, and that didn't go, but the stanchions did.
Okay.
All right. Okay, at this...
It says in the... Before then, it says putting the A3 signage arches and three rivers bid on hold and bringing it back to the board for approval at a future date.
Mm-hmm.
But I just... If we approved, did we do a formal vote just for that part?
My recollection is that we did take a vote on that, as we took a vote not to do the one, but I'm obviously pulling off my memory from spring.
Yeah, so the, I just pulled up the minutes. So we had the base bid of 505-800, and the signage arches, the fold-up windows, the turned-down wall, the metal roof, and then the viewing platforms.
So that night, you approved, you discussed?
Discussed all of them.
Including the alternates, and you approved the alternates except for the platforms, I believe. We can pull the minutes.
Okay.
All right, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved?
Moved by Friddell, support by Lauterbach. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And you may adjourn.